This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
The meeting is called to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Patty, has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spindler?
Here.
Commissioner Cummins?
Here.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Duhax?
Here.
Commissioner Boo?
Here.
Commissioner Jean?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Thank you. The next order of business is the election of board officers, and the first office is that of President. When making a nomination, you may nominate yourself, or you may nominate another board member. So nominations are now in order for the office of President.
I nominate. May I?
Yes.
I nominate Rich Spindler.
Rich Spindler has been nominated for the office of President. Are there further nominations? Are there further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of President are closed. We will proceed with a ballot vote. Patty, would you please pass out the ballots?
I don't think we have to do a ballot vote unless there's more than one person nominated.
Okay. Then, um...
We could accept a motion to...
Yeah, is there a mo...
For that election, yes.
Right, is there a motion to...
I'm moved that we accept that nomination and cast a...
You nominate him as ballot?
You nominate him as ballot?
Mm-hmm. Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Be careful.
Opposed? Rich Spindler has been elected Board President. Congratulations, Rich. I'll pass the gavel down to you.
Thanks. All right, thank you. So now, we will move on to the election of the Vice President. I would accept a call for nominations for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Catherine Duhax.
Okay, we do have a nomination for Catherine Duhax. Do we have any further nominations for Vice President? Any further nomination? Oh, you want to turn off your thing. Hearing none, nominations are closed. As we indicated before, we do a ballot if there was more than one, a secret ballot, but there's only one, so we'd accept a motion to approve this nomination for Catherine Duhax.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of approving Catherine Duhax as a Vice President say aye. Opposed? Motion has passed. Now we will move on to election of Clerk. I will accept a nomination for Clerk of the School Board.
I nominate Trish Cummins.
We have a motion for Trish Cummins as Clerk. I will accept... Do we have any further nominations for Clerk? Any further nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. I would now accept a motion to approve Trisha Cummins as Clerk of the School Board.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second from Chris Hambach-Boyle. All those in favor of approving Trish Cummins as Clerk say aye. Any opposed? Motion has passed. Next, we have a Clerk designee that we need a nomination for. I would accept a nomination for Clerk designee for the School Board. I wouldn't.
I nominate Dan Van De Water.
We have Dan Van Water as nominated as Clerk designee. Do we have any further nominations?
Can we get clarification?
On?
On if a person is to leave the office, what would happen?
I think... That's a good question. I don't know how our policy says if someone leaves. I think we would vote at that time for another Clerk designee, I think is what our policy would say.
Thank you.
I will follow up on that, to be sure. Good question. Any further nominations? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve Dan Van De Water as our Clerk designee.
So moved.
Motion from Catherine Duhax. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Joe Luganville. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion has passed for Dan Van De Water as Clerk designee. Congratulations, Dan. Appreciate it. Second, now we had need a... Would... I ask for a nomination for Treasurer of the Board. Do I have a nomination for that? Catherine Duhax?
I nominate Charles Vu.
We have one nomination for Charles Vu. Are there any further nominations for Treasurer? Seeing none, nominations are closed for Treasurer of the School Board. Do I have a motion to approve Charles Vu as Treasurer of the Board?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Jean.
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Hambach-Boyle. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Finally, we require a nomination for Secretary. Do I have a nomination for Secretary of School Board?
Nominate Patty Iverson.
We have a nomination for Patty Iverson. Do I have any further nominations? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve Patty Iverson as Secretary of School Board.
So moved.
We have a motion from Catherine Duhax. We have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Jean. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We are done with nominations and election of School Board Officers. Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right. So next, we have to plan our seating arrangement, and I'll give you a chance to finish writing there. I'll let you finish there, Patty Iverson. Drawing numbers for where we will sit next time. So it goes one, two, three. Okay, all right. All right, so everyone, as we're seating charts, we will rearrange those for next... Rearrange the seating for next time. And that adjourns our organizational meeting. So now we will begin our regular meeting of the School Board. Yeah, we'll do that next time, I think. Otherwise, you've got to move our Chromebooks around and stuff. Oh, okay. Oh, I'll pull mine up. So first, public forum. We have no one, I believe, signed up for the public forum. For next is the Superintendent's Report, and you need this up. And mine... Let me log into mine, because mine went out, so let me do that quick here. There you go. Yep, there you go. These things go to sleep kind of quickly on us, and you've got to log in again when they go to sleep, so...
We have quite a long calendar of events. We have quite a long calendar of events, everyone, for the upcoming Board of Education. May 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Administration Building, there will be a Compensation Committee hourly group, and Chris Hambach-Boyle will be attending that. On May 7th, at 4:00 p.m. in the Administration Building, there's a Charter of Choice Committee. On May 11th, from 4:00 to 7:00 in the Administration Building, there's a Compensation Committee non-affiliated group, and Catherine Duhax will be that representative. On May 11th, there's a Parent Advisory Council meeting at 7:00 p.m. At 6:00 p.m. that evening, there's a Board Orientation meeting. On May 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Administration Building, we'll have our first Strategic Team Planning meeting. On June 16th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon at the Administration Building, there will be another meeting of the Compensation Committee non-affiliated group, and Catherine Duhax is slated for that meeting. On June 16th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the Administration Building, there will be a Compensation Committee for hourly group, and Chris Hambach-Boyle will be the representative. On June 17th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon in the Administration Building, there'll be a Compensation Committee meeting with the Certified Group, and Charles Vu will be the representative to that group. On June 22nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., there's a Strategic Planning Team meeting. That will be the second meeting of the team. Followed on July 27th, from 5:00 to 7:30, there will be a community forum about the strategic plan. And then on August 10th, and this is a tentative time, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be our last Strategic Planning Team meeting. So a full calendar of events for you. This week, we celebrate, as we do each year, National Teacher Appreciation Week. It is a week-long celebration in the United States, and it is observed the first full week in May. Teacher Appreciation Day is always observed on the Tuesday that falls during Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, as we celebrate the work of our teaching staff, I'd like to see each and every one of our teachers just surrounded and showered with gestures of appreciation for the knowledge and the love that our teachers share with our children each day. I'm very fond of saying that teaching is a people-dependent business, and without the expertise and guidance of a highly qualified teaching force, our students will not meet their full potential. As a community, we rely on teachers, along with parents, to help grow future generations and to help our students be the best that they can be. This week is one in which we highlight the wonderful work of our educators, and I ask everyone to join me in honoring the Eau Claire teachers and their efforts on behalf of the children in our community. So tonight, we have some recognitions to make in the field of arts. Lake Shore student Annika Scholos had artwork that was chosen to be displayed at the New Employee Clinic. A senior planner for the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission saw Annika's farmhouse and wanted to use it as the cover for the 2015 Farm Fresh Atlas. So Annika and her art teacher, Jeannie Werner, are here tonight. Annika, where are you? So did you get a copy of the T P? Okay. And is your teacher here with you tonight? Stand up, please. The National PTA has a Reflections Art Program, and this is a program which encourages students to express their thoughts and feelings through the creative arts. Every year, a student-produced theme is chosen, and children create artwork at home or at school to express that theme. Prizes and recognition are offered at the school, state, and national levels. In 2011, Sam Davey began offering open studio time in the evenings. Our teacher, Dani Johnson, offered materials and a space to create the work after school hours. The work was created and was completely authentic and student-generated from the idea conception through production. Students were given opportunities to learn new techniques and access to technology and other resources that were not available at home. Parents joined the sessions and watched their children work. Sam Davey PTA and parent volunteer Sarah Welkerson spearheaded a committee and renewed the program, and parent volunteers Dory Fink, Nancy Brenner, and Jamie Berg have also chaired the position sharing their time and talents. Students are able to submit art in six different categories, and this year, Sam Davey had 28 participants with 38 entries in five categories, and Sam Davey had four grand state winners. Shelby Finder, Visual Arts Intermediate Division; Hannah Johnson, Dance Choreography Primary Division; Grace Johnson, Dance Choreography Intermediate Division; and Emma Bunge, former Sam Davey student, now North Star student, Visual Arts in the Middle School Division. Students who placed first in the state level moved on to national competition. All the students here tonight won awards at the state level by creating work to reflect their year's theme, "The World Would Be a Better Place If." So I'd like to ask these students to stand and be recognized. Hannah Johnson, Grace Johnson, Lauren Cantz, Kate Finder, Lily Deary Thatcher, Shelby Finder, Kaylee Stolt, Emma Bunge, Emma Johnson, Makia... Is that the right pronunciation? Makaya, thank you. Loken, Alicia Labonne, and Macy Edwards, if you'll all stand and be recognized. So thank you for your hard work, and thank you for representing us so well.
All right, let's get a good picture. Great, great stuff. Teacher Appreciation Week tied with lots of great things students are doing. Good. Just a few announcements from me tonight as President. First, to board members, I'll distribute by email. I'll send you a form to fill out what committee assignments you would prefer, and we'll approve those next time. So I'll send that out soon to you, kind of a form I did last time. Reminder, high school graduations are June 9th and 10th for Memorial and North, and so check with Patty. She'll either do a sign-up or you just tell her what she would like to do. It's kind of nice if we can even it out, so we can have some at both, so... Check with her about that. There is a... I want to remind people for training, there's a WASB Summer Institute, July 18th. That covers a number of leadership-type of topics, if you're interested in going to that. And there's a number one on November 4th, which we can talk about later. The last thing is, I want to mention to you that on Wednesday, May 13th, there's a Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction recognition banquet for students that have gone through their program and promote them to go into college. So if you're interested in that banquet, I forwarded an email to you with the details, but it's Wednesday, May 13th that evening. It's a dinner. So... And the deadline is May 6th, so it's only two days away. But if you're interested, that email has who to reply to, to go, if you're interested, so... Okay, great. And we don't have a Student Representative Report tonight, but we will be interviewing students soon for next year. Okay, right, we don't have... Not neither are here tonight, correct? Yeah, 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 okay. Board Committee reports. I know there's a Policy and Governance. Is there a charter? Have you met since? So we have a charter, and I don't know if there's any others. So how about we do the Policy and Governance report? Commissioner Cummins, I think you're doing that?
Policy and Governance met this morning to finalize the proposed revisions that you will see tonight in the language for Policy 230. We're retaining... We're recommending retaining the position Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. This was in the original policy language, even though we're not currently utilizing that position. This came as a recommendation from the assessment that was recently done, and the recommendation was to install a point person for all matters related to instruction. So this will be Student Services, Curriculum Assessment, Professional Development for pre-K-12. And the hope is to have vertical alignment in these areas and break the silos that were identified during the system's assessment. This is not intended... Or it will not result in additional FTEs or additional costs. It's coming together through reorganization of existing vacancies in Teaching and Learning. And also, including the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning to the administrative team will not have... In addition to not having a negative financial impact, it will not result in any current position being lost in the Teaching and Learning Department. We also looked at policy regarding Superintendent Coles' evaluation. I'm blanking on the number. Took a quick look at that to look at the timeline, and that language will be coming in a future report, but to look at the timeline for goal-setting, evaluation, mid-year reports, things like that.
Great, thank you. So that's it?
That's it.
Okay, great. Charter School Committee, we have a report from that?
We met on the 21st of April, and we met in order for us as a group to kind of look at the Innovative Schools Network Conference that a group of us participated in this past week. We wanted to go through the offerings there and strategically make sure that we covered what we wanted to cover for what would be good for the Eau Claire school district. So we had some at the initial pre-conference with the Unsustainable by Tim McDonald. He presented, and then we were able to sit and talk with Madison and Kenosha as well around the idea of Charter Choice programming. And so that's kind of that piece of it, but we also wanted to, now that we're done with the consistency in the contracts for our charter schools by using the benchmarks provided by the Department of Public Instruction, we started to think that we would start working on a template of sorts that would allow people to bring their ideas relative to choice charter, the choice piece. And so this is a report to the Board to kind of get you revved up to the idea that we're going to involve you more within the next steps of this committee. We added an additional meeting, which will be this May 7th, to work on a draft, very much of a draft, of some benchmarks or a template so that we can bring that back to the Board for your input, and which we hope to do that on May 18th. And this is just tentative, certainly with input from the Board and part of the conversation and all that sort of thing. May 19th, we would take your suggestions back from that presentation and tweak what we have worked on, and hopefully maybe be done with this piece of it by the first of June meeting. So that's the tentative plan, but certainly open for lots of discussion. So if that timeline doesn't stick, because we have more conversation about it, that's fine, but we thought we would start with somewhat of a timeline, okay? In front of you, you have a book. Trish had suggested or asked to have this book purchased for board members. This is a book written... I know Trish, if you want to. Can she say something?
You actually... You shouldn't. Two, hopefully you have the Unsustainable is the first book we'd love for you to read, which sets up the argument for having a R and D.
Yeah, it's a book that the committee's read, but it also is food for thought on running things maybe a little bit differently, so we're very excited.
And this is the follow-up to that, which is, this talks about teacher-led schools and a research and development split screen approach, and an improbable school is written by the teachers, the founders and teachers out of Wildlands, and so this is a example of a school based on the unsustainable model.
Right.
Did you pass out the first book?
Well, we... I want to bring that up because if you don't have a sustainable, let me know, and then we'll make sure that you get a copy. We were kind of unsure which board members had them and which didn't have them, because that book's been kind of flying around.
We were... It was passed out sometime this past year.
Yeah, so if you don't have one, then let us know, and we'll get you one, okay? And that's the end of the Charter of Choice School Report, okay?
Great, thank you, Chris. Commissioner Hambach-Boyle. I don't believe any other committees met, but if I'm missing some, let me know. Trish, you're on. Thanks. Chris, you're on. Well, I guess you're next anyhow, so legislative update?
I left my light on. I passed this around so people have it, so I'm not going to spend that much time on it, but I will for public television, so that they're able to go and find this information. This is hot off the press today. I got it on my mobile app. I think you all probably got it too, about the school funding increase. There's some good signs that the $127 million cut per pupil aid will be restored. My reason for letting you know about this is that's a good thing, but that still just brings us back to zero, and so people need to be aware of that. I want to thank the board members that have done this and people in our community and here tonight that have connected with their legislators. It has made a big difference. And so we're urging... WASB is urging that people continue to do that. On what I've given you, there are signs. It says here that there are signs that key legislators want to propose increases in funding to schools, and our message is, that's really good, but we have to also keep the message about where we do sit, even if that funding is returned, okay? They give you some good contact information and talking points that you can use with your legislators. I thought it was a great list. And then there's some key ways to find your legislators on this handout, and I left some extras on the table for people if they need them. You can find all of this at WASB.org, okay? The only other thing legislatively that I pulled out that was intriguing to me is the Assembly Committee, and I think they held the hearing today on a bill that mandates high school students pass a civics test on citizenship in order to graduate. It would be a 100-question immigration naturalization exam that most people take, and so we will see how that comes out. Any other... That's the things I pulled out today, so that's the end of the legislative report.
Great, great. Some good news in there. It's good to hear. Yeah, right, okay. Okay, we have no individually considered resolutions tonight, so we'll adjourn to committee. The first we have is employee handbook modification. Oh, did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the consent agenda. Excuse me, excuse me. I was... I had it covered up. I had it under my lap. So we'll do the consent resolution agenda. Excuse me, all right. And under the consent resolution agenda, these things have been looked at before, or are routine matters for the most part, and board members can poll them to consider them separately if need be. So I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2015.
Paul, Paul, those, please.
Okay. I would approve the motion to approve the minutes of the closed session, April 20th, 2015. I would approve a motion to approve the Human Resources employment report. I would accept a motion to approve the 2015-16 school meal pricing. I'll accept a motion to approve the final notice of non-renewal for teachers on limited-term contracts. I would accept a motion to approve the reemployment of certified staff for the 2015-16 school year.
Pull that, please.
Okay, we have that one pulled. Okay. So we have four in our motion, minutes of closed session, human... I'm sorry, we will need a motion of minutes of closed session, human resources, school meal pricing, and final notice of non-renewal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hambach-Boyle. Second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Cummins. Any discussion? Okay. We'll need a roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duhax?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes. Okay, first item that was polled to become a standalone resolution is the minutes of April 20th. Commissioner Duhax, did you have a comment before we go poll?
Yes, I have a question. In paragraph 7.4, it says, "It was noted that the contracts referring to the Montessori charter school would be reviewed by the Charter of Choice Committee each year." I don't believe we have that in the operating procedures of the committee, do we?
I would say maybe that's a reference, Kath... I mean, that's a good point, in the sense that we have made it part of the committee to talk about our contracts, you know, but I don't know if it's specifically stated, so maybe we need to...
I just don't think it was clear, and we had talked about it at one point, like, are we doing that, or are we not doing that? So I think we should consider that point, because the way the contract reads is that it'd be an automatic renewal, and it doesn't come back to the Board.
Right, so in the... In the comment here, it says... I'm just trying to find it, because I had to pull it up here. Oh, will re-reviewed. Yes, I see what you're saying. That's not like part of a particular policy. It's not part of the contract, that statement. Okay.
I think that needs to be taken out until we consider... I think that needs to be taken out until we consider that point.
Any other, why don't we first have a motion put on the floor and then we could have a motion to remove that line and we could have a discussion about that. So let's put, let's put.
A motion to remove?
Well, let's get a motion to put the minutes on the table first. So we have a motion from Commissioner Cummins to put it on the, the minutes on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Commissioner Hamblow. So now you would like a motion?
A motion to remove that line from the minutes.
To move the line. It was, the line, "It was noted that contracts would be reviewed by the Charter Choice Committee each year." Any comments or discussion on that amendment? Commissioner Cummins?
I don't think, I'm concerned about removing the language from what happened, if we need to address that, if we're, if we want to shore that up.
It didn't happen.
We're saying that did not happen.
It did not happen.
That discussion?
That discussion, I think we have an understanding.
No, we discussed it.
We think that it might happen, but it, it isn't a fact.
Let's clarify, I believe Commissioner Cummins is saying that the discussion happened, but not that this actually, so that's what's in the minute, that this discussion happened versus what I think you're saying, Commissioner Duax, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is not something that regularly does happen. So it's a question of what happened in the discussion versus what I think.
Okay. We talked about it could happen, but it is not policy yet.
So perhaps the amendment could say, "It was noted that we, it's possible," or something like, "It was possible that the contracts could be, may be reviewed." Okay, may be reviewed. So maybe instead you could make the amendment to change that language from would to maybe. Does that make sense?
I'm all right with that.
Okay, so I'll take that as a motion to replace would with maybe. Do I have a second for that amendment?
Second.
I have a second, Commissioner Jean. Any, so further discussion about that. So the motion is to amend the minutes to say, "It was noted that contracts may be reviewed by the Charter Choice Committees each year." Okay, let's, let's have a voice vote to approve or not that amendment. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, seeing that amendment passes to replace that would by maybe, so now we can now vote on the minutes unless there's further discussion. Any further discussion?
I move for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. The second piece was the reemployment of certified staff for 2015-16. Commissioner Luganbill?
Due to an immediate family member, I would like to abstain, so I'll leave the room while the vote is called and I'd like the minutes to reflect that.
Okay.
And come get me when you're done.
Excellent, okay, we'll do, we'll do. So I need a motion on the floor to approve the reemployment of certified staff for the 2015-16 school year. Joe decided to put us in the dark at the same time. Nice trick, nice trick. We have a motion from Commissioner Duax, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hamblow. Okay, and I would like a voice vote on this one, I believe. I mean, no, I'm sorry, a roll call vote, excuse me.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamblow?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
An abstention.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Luganbill may return, okay? If he so wishes.
Don't touch the lights.
Now, we have no individual considered resolutions and we will adjourn to committee. We have two committee reports tonight. One is on employee handbook recommended modifications. While we're getting that ready, there's just a few major reports in this, points in this agenda item, which Kay Marks will go over. Oh, so it automatically shut down. So we have to wait a few minutes for it to come up again?
This is a new computer and apparently they did not change that because we had it so they wouldn't log off, so.
Yeah, okay.
Or maybe it's just that I need to log back.
We have time.
We'll try this. There we go.
Okay, so I know that the board had received the proposed employee handbook changes or modifications early on, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, and since that point in time, I think there's two, maybe three additional changes that have come forward that have been taken to the ERC but were just added after the, the copy went to all of you. So before I dive into the proposed modifications, I, again, as I do each year, want to thank the members of the Employee Relations Committee. The ERC, I think each year that we do this, we get more efficient and more calculated in the work that we do. The group was very diligent in coming up with recommendations for language and then taking that back to the employees to seek input and then would bring the input back at the following meetings. So I think that that whole system, as we go through it each year, gets more and more efficient and effective, and so just a big loud shout out and kudos to those faculty members because they do a great job helping to communicate to changes that are being proposed with their colleagues in the building. So I appreciate all the work that they do on this committee. So with that, I'm just going to quickly go through the proposed modifications that we have. A lot of them are kind of superficial in nature in terms of dates and deadlines that needed to be changed, so not in comparison to other years, not a lot of substantive changes this year. So the first one in Part 1, now remember, Part 1 is applicable to all employees in the district, so anything in this section pertains to every employee in the district. Insurance eligibility, taking out the word permanent, that again has to do with all the changes that came through with the ACA. So each year we kind of modify anything related to that as they change things along the way. Number two was years of service definition. This, what you see in yellow there, yellow and red, isn't anything new, it's just new to the handbook. So it's past practice of what's been done, but it wasn't documented anywhere, and so we realized that it was something that should be in the handbook for employees to be able to find. Number three, the eligibility for FMLA, just again, this is what we do, it's just never been shared anywhere, that the calendar year is from January to December. Number four, emergency school closures. If you recall, this language was drafted a couple of years ago with the expectation that the bulleted positions, all of those positions, people in those positions need to report on emergency school closure days. So each one of those are considered to be critical to the operations of the district even when students are not here for the day, and so we needed to add a couple of those positions in after either realizing that they were inadvertently left out or the fact that some language clarification was needed. So in buildings and grounds, the school year custodians, those positions didn't exist the last time that we had the handbook drafted, so those are new simply from that standpoint. Central office receptionist, obviously that's the position right out here and is a position that we feel is critical to the operations of the district even on emergency school closure days. Elementary principals, and then a little bit down, it says head secondary principals. That's just a clarification because in language, where we're referring to it as the principals, elementary principals are the head principal in their building, so we want to make sure that there's a distinction between the two. First cooks, this is a position that we hadn't thought of previously, but in working with the food nutrition director, it was determined that individuals in these positions do need to report on emergency school closure days to make sure that either somebody's there to receive deliveries or to plan for the next day's meals. Otherwise, we'd have a lot of kids going hungry the following day. And then technology repair and support supervisor, that's a position who in the past had been required to be here and was simply just missed, so that individual's actually been reporting on those days. Farther down in that same section, the language regarding the professional, using your professional judgment as to whether or not to report to work on emergency school closure days. As you know, in the past, we had two days built into the calendar. With next year's calendar, we have five emergency school closure days built in, so that was changed from two days to five days. And then just a little blurb about the school year custodians and the fact that they need to report on all implement weather days. And then we added, because it hadn't been in here previously, the language about late start or two-hour delays. So the information you see here has been communicated to the buildings every time that there's the potential that we were going to have a late start, and we figured it was just time to put it in the employee handbook so everybody had access to it whenever they were looking for it. Number five, again, just some definitions about, just semantics, taking out the word definition and just leaving it as leave calculations. And then 902, leave increments, any leave should be taken in 15-minute increments. We've been running into, we're one of the few districts that allow employees to take leave by the minute and instead of doing it in chunks of time. And what we've been finding is people wind up with, you know, seven minutes left of paid leave and then they need to take the rest of the time in unpaid leave, and it's a record keeping nightmare to do this, especially for the employees, because they're very confused, well, how did I wind up with three minutes left? And so it was determined that we would go to 15-minute increments so that things are, not that people have to go on the hour or the half hour, but regardless, it needs to be in a 15-minute increment so that their balances moving forward make a little bit more sense to them. The sick leave earned section, this was just, there had been some language that indicated, it said the same thing two different ways, so we just changed it to make sure it said the same thing in each way. So you can see that it indicates employees who begin work after the first day of the fiscal year shall have their sick leave prorated. Same thing in letter B. Regarding jury duty, in the past or currently, because this is still the same language, if you're called to be on jury duty, you get a stipend check from the courts for a very minuscule amount of money for your time donated to the service of being a civil servant, and then that was required to be turned into the accounting office, and then there was a lot of work that went into that, and for the amount of money that that check is, it's just a lot easier if the employee keeps that money and we don't have to do the man-hours to try to subtract it from their pay and so on and so forth. So if you get called for jury duty, congratulations, it's an additional bonus for that day. It's cheaper that way than having to do the legwork behind the scenes. Number eight is something new, because it's in green, this is something that you hadn't seen before in the information that was sent to you. We have a different software program in the payroll department which now allows for that staff to check quite easily whether or not individuals have used sick leave, or yeah, sick leave. So in the past, we'd indicated that employees who thought that they hadn't used any sick leave during the year needed to contact the payroll department so that that could be investigated for them. If they hadn't used any leave, then they got an additional personal day the following year. Now payroll is saying, "We've got software that can do this expediently and we don't need to put that on the employees anymore. We'll just run that report for everybody and we'll automatically put the days in if it's required for that person." So a little less of steps for the employees on that end. Now we're getting into some leave balances. You'll see this as we go through, lots of the deadlines for notifying the district of certain things have been changed from on or before April 1st to on or before March 1st. This has to do a lot with the staffing process and being able to not have things be so far along in the school year that we're looking to do the major part of our hiring in the summer months. So these, changing these dates and making things a month earlier will give us some leeway in times of, in terms of those deadlines and the ability to go out and seek staff replacements. The flex spending information, this is simply about, we had the exact information in there and because it changes every time we turn around, it was decided that it was just easier to say, "Contact the payroll department" so that we don't have to change the handbook each year when this amount changes from the IRS. This information is sent out when we do open enrollment and all employees get information about that, so the maximums will, will be indicated as they always have been in that Number 11, the improvement committees, just some capitalization there in letter A, and then the addition of letter C, which is volunteer district-wide committees will be made up of representatives from all employee groups whenever possible. Membership will include employees with varying years of experience and employees who are union members as well as those who are not. So working with this language, we figured that this was a solid way to get a cross-representation of everybody when we have so many of these volunteer committees. We've got a lot of people who are interested in participating in those, and this is a way of making sure that our membership on those is cross-categorical. Part two, now this is the section of the handbook that is the, the teacher section or the certified staff section. Letter, sorry, number 12, under educator effectiveness, obviously taking out the word new because following this year, the educator effectiveness system will no longer be new. There might be some aspects that are, we're still learning as they change things, but the actual system is no longer new. Same thing with taking out documented in TeachSCAPE because that wasn't always the case, nor may it possibly be going forward, so we figured we didn't need to have that in there. And then the teacher will submit the plan to his or her principal or assistant principal each fall per the required timelines in the DPI educator effectiveness system. This was simply clarifying that if you're a certified staff member, that you're, the person who's supervising you is going to be either the principal or the assistant principal, that it wouldn't be a coach, you know, like a literacy coach or math coach of any sort, because that's not allowed. So again, lots of changes about the principal, assistant principal.
I think we have a question. Go ahead, Commissioner Duax.
On section 11, what is, what is the usual membership of the building improvement committees?
In the buildings, we attempt to get representatives from all employee groups, so they'll, and then to be cross-represented. So whenever possible, we try to have a buildings and grounds person in, like at the elementary level, there's not as many people to choose from, and so they try to set those meetings up in lots of cases so that it coincides with when the building custodian would be able to attend the meetings. Otherwise, there's classified staff, certified staff. I don't believe we've ever had food and nutrition on the committee just simply because their hours are finished by the time any of those meetings happen. As well as guidance counselors, intermediate, primary, they try to mix that up. Anybody who wants to attend a BIC committee meeting can show up to the meeting. You don't, you don't have to be on the committee to attend the meeting. So again, in number two, or part two of the handbook, under employee relations, this is the section that refers to liquidated damages. We had a lot of conversation and discussion about this section during the ERC because although the, the amounts didn't change in A through C, those liquidated damages amounts remained at 507,50,000, but the timelines changed. And the timelines changed for multiple reasons. One, because we've got a lot more fluidness in our employee population with coming and going, and so by changing these dates, it helps us to better capture when people are leaving the district. And then D and E are new altogether. Letter D indicating that it's a $2,000 liquidated damage if a teacher resigns on or after the start of the school year. So if at any point in time during the school year, a teacher would resign, $2,000 would be the liquidated damage. And then for any new-to-the-district teachers who may have had some type of specialized training or professional development that the district invested money into, there's the potential for the district to, to seek that, that amount back if there was something, you know, kind of out of the norm for the professional development of that person if they didn't stay on after the completion of their first year. Number three is just taking away that that line was no longer applicable with the change in the dates. And again, the request for teachers to share, our, share information with us has moved to March 1st instead of April 1st. Early retirement, this is still in the teacher section of the handbook. Again, the dates on or before March 1st, adding that they can write a letter to myself as well as Dr. Hardbeck, because sometimes I think we're like, well, did you get this one? Did you get this one? Committee thought that if we indicated that they should submit it to both of us, then we'd be sure not to miss anybody. And then we also took out the language right underneath 701, committee to continue studying in 2014-15. If you remember, that same line was in the previous employee handbook that said to study in 13-14, and then now this one is 14-15, and... And I think that the reason that it was originally put in there is because there was a committee in existence at that point in time back in 12, 13, and it was to note to people that there's the potential that this could change, because there's a committee investigating it, but didn't feel it was critical to continue to put that in there with a change in date, because there's been information presented to the board, and as of right now, that committee is no longer in existence. So that's that information.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
That first line where you say, "to superintendent and executive director of human resources," I just wouldn't want a employee not to get it if they send it to one and not the other, you know, I don't want, you know, oh, I didn't realize I had to send it to both.
Yep, lots of times, if, if the employee doesn't see their employment action on the next board report, and they haven't gotten a letter from our office saying the board acted on this, you know, whatever their request is, then they contact us, they reach out and say, you know, I sent the letter to Dr. Hardbeck, or I sent it to Kay, and I didn't see it on the employment report, and then we track it down. It doesn't happen very often, but there was always a lot of question about, well, so it says to send the letter to the superintendent, does that mean I shouldn't send one to the executive director of human resources? So the conversation was just simply that, you know, if they send it to both, then it's covered.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be that we wouldn't, that we would not honor somebody's request because I didn't get the letter.
Yeah, right. It's a technical detail that someone could, okay.
The years of service part in number 15, that was the information that I shared at the very beginning, I think that was number one or two on the list. That definition, we just put in the handbook, but it's always been the case. The big part here that's struck out, this is information that I learned was part of the master agreements, that was never the way that we've done this, at least for the past 20-plus years. The language that we're striking out here isn't how the early retirement stipend has been done or calculated, and if we would begin to follow this language, it would be extremely detrimental to our employees in terms of the benefit that they'd be receiving. So the way that we currently do it is not this, and so it was important to take that out of there. Again, early retirement stipend, taking, just taking out the study committee, dates for the child-rearing leaves. Part three is our non-exempt staff without individual contracts, so this would be all of our support services. So A and B under 406, this is what currently happens and has happened for years, it's just that it was never in the handbook, so we added that so that people knew where to find it. The license renewal for special education assistance and healthcare assistance, there's always been a reimbursement for license renewal, however, with the great challenge that the district is having in securing people in these positions, we thought that it was time that we look at just compensating that $75, I'm sorry, reimbursing that $75, as long as the person met the 30 days and 25-hour minimum requirement, because otherwise, people weren't submitting applications to become certified as a special education assistant, and therefore, we had positions and still continue to have positions that are just unfilled. So whatever we can do to try to encourage people to go down that avenue, we felt was something that we could, this was something that we could do in that venue. And hopefully, we'll see an increase in people securing those positions and working with our students. Again, 11 and 12, I'm sorry, 21 and 22 are the same things we've talked about previously. Part four is the administrator and executive assistant section. So again, dates, the committee. In number 25, there was just a, it was a typo, a cut-and-paste from a previous edition that had statute 11822, which is the teacher statute, we needed 11824, which is the administrator statute, so that's been revised. In part five, the non-affiliated employees, adding the HR coordinator position, which we have now into this section. Letter C on number 27, the unused vacation days do not carry over to the following year for kitchen managers. Again, this is past practice, it's something that's already in place in what we've been doing, just needed to put it in the document, taking out the study, adding the HR coordinator, and then substitute employees. Permanent or limited-term classified employees who sub for an absent classified employee shall receive their own regularly, their own regular hourly rate of pay, including longevity. Again, a way to try to increase the amount of people that we can get to sub for us in these positions, because it's very challenging to fill them, and we've had a lot of them gone unfilled. And prior to the handbook, our classified employees were getting their own hourly rate when they subbed outside of their hours. When we went to the handbook, we changed that, and now we're looking at the data, finding out that we'd need to change that back, because we've got very qualified staff who work four hours a day and then are gone, where we could get them to sub for us the other four hours, because they're highly capable, but because they were only getting a sub-rate of $9.25 an hour, they weren't selecting to do that. So again, we're hoping that, that these changes here with both food, nutrition, and classified for substitutes, that that will help us to fill those positions that have been a real struggle this year. That's it?
Neat idea. I like that.
Yes. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions from board members?
I have about two questions. Back to item four. Has there been any challenge on the idea of professional judgment?
Challenge from who?
Challenge from fair treatments, like someone may show up using their professional judgment, or someone who simply don't show up, but whose judgment is that?
There hasn't been any challenge where, you know, people said, oh, you know, you should show up and you didn't, at least not to our level. There's, I know that there's certainly a lot of communication and conversation among employees about, about that. And when you say whose professional judgment, it's every employee's professional judgment as to whether or not they could or should report to work on any of those days. So it's based upon that employee's own judgment.
But generally, when you have that kind of language, the pattern, the practice seems to be that no one show up? Or few?
I think that it all depends. I think that there are some staff who love those days, because they're able to come in and get a lot of work done in a real quiet and uninterrupted environment. And there's other people who, I think, when they look at their drive to work, say, well, I'm going to decide to work from home today, I'll still get as much done, but I won't have to make the drive-in. So I think it's different for every employee.
And there's no challenge about one group being treated unfairly over the others?
There hasn't been any challenge since this, I mean, again, no, no formal challenge.
Okay.
Lots of discussion about, well, do I have to report? Don't I have to report? And we continue to send the message that it's up to each individual employee.
It's been working well?
I'm sorry?
So far. It's been, the pattern seems to be working well.
It depends on what you're looking for. I mean, I think that when, when the board drafted this language, was that last year? The year before? Last year? I think there's a lot of question about whether or not people needed to show up, and how it should be done, and so on and so forth, and this language has been rewritten numerous times to try to make it as clear as possible that it's up to each individual employee to make that decision for themselves.
Okay. Next question, following, in that same section. What about the idea that? You have a lot of, you have some important position, which includes administrator. For example, elementary and then head secondary principal, who are deemed necessary to be there, but then you have the high school principal who are not mentioned at all. What are the justification, and has there been any challenge?
The head principals, where it says head secondary principals, that's, that's the high school principals. That's the high school and middle school principals. So what that's saying is that the assistant principals in the middle school and the high school don't need to show up or can use their professional judgment to determine whether they're going to show up for work, but the head principals in those buildings are required to show up.
Has there been any challenge about the assistant not being there? Okay. Next question, I would say on page, on item 13, I mean, section 13, question number, item number five. The board, in its discretion, may waive liquidated damage. What, in what way that can be done? How does a staff know that that option is available, and how to request that to make it happen?
Anytime that, when the communication goes to the employee that indicates, you know, you, okay, so you're going to resign in January, here's the amount of your liquidated damages, you can either have it removed out of your last check, or you can give us a check for that amount. At that point in time, there's oftentimes where there's conversation between the employee and myself, where they say, well, is there anything I can do to not have to pay that? And then I give them examples about, in the past, when that's been waived, for example, somebody's spouse gets transferred, you know, out of state and they need to move, but when they're leaving us to go to another job, you know, when our employee's leaving to go up the street to another school district, or to leave education altogether and go work in a different sector, those haven't been situations where, where we waived the liquidated damage. When somebody does, they, they send a letter requesting a liquidated damage waiver, Dr. Hardbeck and I sit down and discuss those and determine whether or not, you know, it's out of the ordinary, a unique situation with extenuating circumstances, because it's some of the, some of those that I gave to you, or sometimes it's medical situations where they just can't continue to work anymore. But otherwise, if it's just, you know, the typical, I'm leaving for a different or better, in my view, better job, then the liquidated damages are applied.
So you were saying the requests go through you or Dr. Hardbeck?
The, the letter comes to either one of us, and then Dr. Hardbeck and I sit down and review it.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
That's good for now, thank you.
Good questions, thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank you and the committee for the work on this. I remember a couple of years ago when I first got on the board, I said, boy, I'd like to see things that we're doing now get in the, get in here, and you mentioned several times, these are current practices that weren't done before, but now we're putting them in to make sure. So I really appreciate doing all that, thank you. Any other comments from, from the board on this? Okay, I would, oh, I'm sorry, this is a committee report, so we don't have a motion. Is everyone comfortable moving this forward to a resolution next time? Any comments on that? Okay, I would assume by no comment, then. I would, we'll do that next time. Thanks again, appreciate it. Any public comment on the employee handbook modifications? No? Okay, all right, good. Next is a discussion and possible first reading of policy 230, the administrative team. So this has been modified partly to update it, from what I understand, but also partly to, you know, prepare for some possible shifting around of duties for positions, essentially. Does anyone on the PNG have anything more to say? I know Commissioner Cummins had given some background on this earlier in the report. Do we have any, anything, any comments on this, or any discussion from the board on Okay. Yes, Commissioner Boil?
I understand this, I think I, we questioned and talked about where certain things would fit under today to add policy and governance relative to research and development, program support, that sort of thing, which was pretty much designated within teaching and learning.
Okay, all right. Seeing no discussion, would someone be willing to do a first reading of this?
I can start.
All right, should we split it up? We can do it in like three sections? Okay, you want to do the first underlined section, and then I'd happy to do a part also.
Sure. Administrative team, 230, superintendent as executive officer. The school superintendent, as the executive officer of the Board of Education, is responsible for administering the school district. In executing that responsibility delegated by the board, the superintendent bears major responsibility for translating the board's goals and objectives into an operating educational program. School board members are responsible for establishing policy and evaluating results, and the superintendent is responsible for the execution of those policies. As the chief professional advisor to the board, the superintendent should be expected to contribute his or her thinking to the board's discussion and deliberations. The superintendent shall develop and maintain administrative rules and regulations needed to carry out board policies. These rules and detailed procedures shall constitute the administrative regulations covering the schools. Additional documents, such as student and parent handbooks, are an extension of delegated authority given to the administration by the board. The board will approve the employee handbook annually.
Thank you. Go ahead. Commissioner Zhang?
The superintendent may delegate portions of the daily operations of the school district to the executive directors. The superintendent may delegate supervision of the business affairs of the school district to the executive director of business services, and the prime responsibility for personnel functions to the executive director of human resource. The superintendent may delegate duties and staff authorities to the executive directors of teaching and learning, and the executive director of administration in their respective areas.
Someone want to take this? Commissioner Dux, would you like to do that? Okay.
The principal, building principals. The principal is in charge of his/her school, and is responsible for the overall conduct, organization, direction, and supervision of the building and of the educational program. The principal is supervised and evaluated by the superintendent and/or the, we just go to executive director there? Executive directors as designated by the superintendent. The principal will work collaboratively with district administrate, whoops, with district employees, families, and students, in order to carry out his/her respective duties and to help develop and provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum for all students.
Since we're going in order, I guess I'll just continue. That's all right. Assistant principals. Assistant principals are vital parts of the administrative team at the middle and high school levels. The principal supervises assistant principals and may delegate authority to assistant principals in areas of school operation in order to ensure collaboration, direction, and organization of the educational program and the physical land. So that is our first reading. Baring of objection, we'll move that to resolution next time. All right, okay. Any public comment on this policy? Oh, come on. All right, okay, good. Okay, so all we have now. Yes, stimulating, good word. Any requests for future agenda items? Any, any from board members? Okay, I would accept a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Second. Second, okay. Glad, I was waiting for that. So we have a motion from Commissioner Boil, second Commissioner Zhang, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.